Good evening as well, please be outstanding for the mayor.
P S C C, thank you so much. Before it started properly, but housekeeping, we're not expecting any fire drills. If you do need, if anything happens, go out on these doors down the stairs. I think probably Richard and Pete, who's outside, will be the people that'll be guiding us in situation. Toilets down this little alleyway right to the end through the kitchen, there's two down there. Please hit yourselves to water, tea and coffee, but try not to be too distracted while we're having a conversation. It's sometimes been quite hard to hear in this room. Is there anything recorded before we start, so I'm aware, just to let everybody know? So this meeting is being recorded and live broadcast there and there, so everyone's aware of that. So chamber rules, I don't have a chaplain, but I'd like to wish you all a very peaceful and respectful evening discussion whilst we're all together for the people of Falmouth. Please refrain from using your phones unless you're taking notes, councillors. Let colleagues know if the council are going to record, but we've already done that one. Be kind and respectful to each other, we're all part of the behaviour that we expect of each other. Please raise your hand according to order at the time if you feel that our civility and respect for just broken councillors, that's in the room, I think you should all know them by now. Please remember to stand when addressing the chamber and for members of the public, because this is a formal council meeting, you can't actually speak from the floor. So hopefully you've all got them, the message to get your questions to your councillors, to make sure they can ask your questions on your behalf. So normal protocols continue. So thank you very much, everyone, for joining us this evening, great to see so many members of the public here. Do you have any apologies, please, Richard?
Yes, we do, Deputy Mayor Alan Rowe and Dean Evans, councillor Dean Evans.
Thank you very much. Do you have any interest in dispensing, oh sorry, a council officer. Sam, Sam, do you remember, sorry. Gerald McRae, apologies to Gerald. Are we a full house other than that then, aren't we? Can't do my maths that quickly. Also, apologies, I have been a bit unwell, so I'm a bit coughy and lazy, that's quite how I feel just about. Do we have any interest in dispensations, councillors in the room? No, fantastic. Can we take as read and to confirm as accurate the part one minutes of the meeting held on the 9th of June 2023? I propose those from the chair, if I could have a second, please, councillor Seale, all in favour of our accurate representation? And that's Carrie, thank you very much. Moving on to the town day report, oh that's me. I forgot that was me, let me just find my notes a minute, I was expecting it to be the top up. So it's been extremely busy over the summer, as I'm sure you're all very aware, as people that live here. It felt rather relentless at times, and I feel like my feet haven't touched the ground. So I'll do a very quick flyby of the bits and pieces I've been doing. So I've been into the Harbour Masters Office and working with them on our environmental plans and talking about our aspirations for the town, which is really great to have that joined up working. Met with A and P, been in obviously talking about toolship, but also about their vision for where they want the docks to be going. And have been to visit a number of cruise ships through there, which has been really wonderful, got some tours of some of them, which is really lovely. Been working with Cornwall Pride on more events, lots of beach things together, going to the conference at Cornwall tomorrow, which is really great. I've been out with fire service, we've been out on the boat a couple of times now to go and visit Liverpool's and go and look at into safety on people that live on boats. And they sort of have discovered that there's kind of a gap in how they would access people that live on the wall if there was an emergency. So they're going out and doing things like handing out smoke detectors and the carbon dioxide alarms. And just getting a safety plan as to what we would do, how we would get there to these people that are inaccessible, so that's been really great. Of course, we had armed forces, that was like about 10 years ago at this point, which has been so much since. And that was a really full on, but really wonderful few days there. Done a walkabout with Safety Falmouth, which is a partnership that myself and the police, the fire, various accurate groups all sit on. We had a great little session on safety and reporting, which was really great. And then we went into town and we went and spoke to a number of people in town, which is really great to be really present in the public eye. I hosted in this room 40 French sailors who didn't speak English, that was fun. Tried learning my schoolgirl French and did my best to entertain them. And we had a really lovely afternoon together with KFLO friends by the end, which was really fantastic. Went to South West Tree for a VIP event, got a little tour, to be sealed, that was lovely. So that's really lovely to be out of county, out of county, out of Falmouth area, whatever we call our area, our constituency, that's it. Usually I'm very much here. Been to a few shows, some amazing young theatre going on in Falmouth. Went to see the Whistle Boys by the Starlight Theatre Group in the folly. And also to see the School of Rock, which is one of my favourite musicals by the Young Generation. Both are fantastic and it's really great if you get the opportunity to go and see those shows, they're really brilliant and what these young kids are able to do. Been absolutely found with community football, went to open the indoor skate park, Love Park, which is doing very well, working hard on the outdoor one. Much more news coming on that soon, fingers crossed we'll have all the answers you want by the end of November. Falmouth Week, let's be honest, that's a blur of dancing for me, so that was great, had a lot of fun dancing. Dressing as a dinosaur, I went through town as a massive dinosaur, it was really hot, but really enjoyable one, lots of stuff for kids, that was brilliant. Went to the High Sheriff's Garden Party with all the different mayors, the train gal was there, that was really wonderful. Been up to university, presented my first giant cheque from the fair trade, from the cop to fair trade, I thought they were fictional things, they still do, these giant cheques, that was really fun. Never seen one of those before. Found the classics, I got to go and judge loads of boats, I don't know much about boats, but had a good crack at that, which was great. But you see the Commonwealth War Graves, there's another tour coming up in October. If you look it up on the internet, they do public free history tours around Falmouth Cemetery, around the old bits. You can go and learn all about the various amazing people that are buried there and the history of some of the service personnel that were buried there and why. I learned that the Tragam Mills used to be a hospital, we knew that. And all these other amazing fascinating things, so please do go and join those if you have the opportunity. I've been fit with fog, which I'm sure councillor Eve was beginning to do, with a little two and three year olds in your mayor outfit. And they think you're foggy Christmas because you've got a big rain cloak, then they think you're a pirate because you've got a funny hat on. That was really joyful, but I think they were a bit confused about what my job was, to be honest, we had a really good time, we did lots of drawing together. And lastly, I gave a house hosted a thank you for the Biffle Teams. Thanks very much to you, Richard, for helping to organise that with me, just because they've been working so hard this summer to keep the streets clean, particularly in our different events that we've had, so that was really wonderful. One last thing to finish off, there's somebody in this room that deserves a really massive congratulations, and that's councillor David Sawby, who was received an award this week, I think, or last week, for beauty, radio, Cornwall, for the Make a Difference Award, you were highly commended. And that's really something you should be proud of, and I'm really proud of you for going and doing that, for all the work you've done on the Martin Gemma as well and the amount you've raised. So congratulations to you, that is a really wonderful accolade, so well done to you. Fantastic, so you've probably heard enough of me, you're going to hear too much of my voice this evening, let's be honest. So we'll move swiftly on, we don't have a deputy mayor here, I don't think you've seen me through the report, did you, Val?
No.
No, so I haven't got anything from him, so we'll move straight on to our presentation. So we've very kindly got Caroline Cameron here from South West Water. And then another one off was from the project officer for the Forest Water Hall. So South West Water, so public questions, we've already covered that in terms of our protocols, and hopefully you've all submitted those either to us and we pass them on to Caroline, or your councillor's going to ask them this evening. And we've been doing a number of site visits, our environmental, strategic environmental officer, Karen, has been asked to do site visits and has helped actually to look at various bits and pieces that South West Water are doing. It's love to go through approval, but we know that Falmouth is a top priority for them. We all don't want sewage here, I think everybody can agree with that, including South West Water, but we do want to work very hard together to try and find solutions. We know that no one's particularly happy right now, but I will demand, to be honest, that we're going to be polite and respectful at all times and will not have any unpleasantness in my chamber. So please make sure you're respectful and kind, and over to you, Caroline, thank you so much for spending your time on a Monday evening to come and talk to us all.
So I thank you for inviting me, and it's actually quite refreshing, because as well as being director of natural resources at South West Water, I am a resident of Falmouth and my team are going to school there and a resident of Falmouth Community Football. In fact, I played for Falmouth in the early days.
I saw.
So I'm, yeah, director of natural resources, I've been with South West Water just over a year. I came from, I previously was chief executive of Cornwall Wildlife Trust and I worked at Cornwall Council a couple of years before that. And then prior to that, I've been in national roles with the environmental regulators, so Naturallyland Delivery Management Organisation, which some of you will be familiar with their work over at the Harbour as well. So different range of third sector and the public sector experience that I'm bringing in to South West Water along with other new recruits who are coming in to help us, help South West Water go on that journey from two star to water company, back up to where it should be for five stars, which is what we all know. So is this, is this still on? I might do if I turn it on. No, it's not going back, no. So cast your mind back to GCSE geography, some of you have heard me say that before, there is a natural water cycle. So rainfall goes onto land, flows down through the rivers, out to sea, then reeds all back into the clouds and falls back into the land again. And there's this natural water cycle that goes round and round. South West Water kind of disrupts that cycle, sorry, James, I'm not going to. And we call it a social water cycle, so. Oh, yeah, thank you, I will say next slide. Yeah, so we disrupted that natural water cycle by extracting water which we then treat and deliver to your homes and businesses. You drink it, we make sure it's safe, then you use that water in your dishwasher and washing machine, toilet, flush away. And South West Water then takes that wastewater and treats it again and then turns it to the environment when it's safe to do so in most cases. And that's, that is the role of the water company. We've got a number of wastewater treatment works, drinking water treatment works. And topical, we have 1,342 storm overflows within the region. So that's the challenge we're facing, 1,342. So what are we doing about wastewater issues in Falmouth? That's me, by the way, kick sampling on the River Cobra through one of the projects that my team work on. We, at the end of June, published our drainage and wastewater management plan. Now, these have been published by water companies across the whole country. And we produced a regional one and then that's broken down into 22 local area plans. And there's a specific plan for the foul catchment. So if you, if you're really interested in what's in there, you can go onto the website and look at the level two plan for Falmouth. But overall, this plan will take us from where we are now, which is an average of about 30 spills per storm overflow per year. It will take that to the highest being an average of 10 per year by 2040, that's what this plan is taking us towards. Now, does everyone, do you know what storm overflow is?
Top of the.
The good idea is to describe it, but it might have not. Yeah, so storm overflows are designed to stop sewage backing up into our homes and businesses essentially. So when there is heavy rain, and particularly in urban areas, where that, the urban surfaces deliver rain quickly into the sewage system. Rather than system being overwhelmed, going back up into your bathroom, we have a series of valves that are a bit like an elbow, if I can describe it that way. And when the water gets to a certain level, that regular water and sometimes there'll be a portion of sewage in there as well, that then tips out like your bath, if it gets to that hole in the tunnels, tips out into rivers and seas to stop the sewage getting back enough into your kitchen or bathroom. So that, that's essentially what storm overflow is. I think we go to next slide, please do. And what I wanted to do was just paint the picture of the investment that's coming to meet those targets and then tell you a bit more about what's happening actually here in Falmouth. So last year, South West Water published something called Water Fit, which was a commitment to bring forwards the average number of spills per year by 2025, but particular sized, 20 per year. That's then been overtaken by the Drainage and Wastewater Management Plan target that I mentioned earlier, to bring it down to 10 per year, a maximum of 10 per year by 2040. And that's 10, that's 10 years ahead of the current government target, so please take reassurance. Storm overflows are not acceptable to South West Water. Our chief exec Susan Davie has on a number of occasions over the last year, in Poland's Warring Presence, said they're not acceptable, it's disgusting. We want to move away from reliance on those storm overflows as the way of stopping sewage backing up into homes and businesses. So specifically then, the lines of investment that are coming into Falmouth is those, that Water Fit investment that I mentioned, and that's investing £600,000 at the beginning in the storm overflows that run through around here for each. Secondly, there's an accelerated delivery programme, and this is what, that was announced in April, and that was the reason why I was invited originally to come to this group to talk about our rates delivery proposals. And that's a £70 million investment in Falmouth and Sydneith, and which will focus on nine storm overflows in Falmouth and six in Sydneith. And then there's the ongoing programme of investment. Across these two outlets, because these are also live investments that are happening, one is a pilot of the Dartmouth Acre Group is in Devon, which is looking to demonstrate how nature based solutions can help to reduce the number of spills. My team are working on that in Devon, but obviously that's Devon, not Falmouth. And then there's also a recently created storm overflow task force, and they are a team who are focusing on the top 250 spillers across the whole of Devon, Cornwall and the Isles of Scilly. And you don't have any of the top 250 spillers in Falmouth. So a bit more detail then about what's going on in Falmouth. Thank you to Falmouth Town Council, the Kerry in particular, who got involved with our consultant Stantec earlier in the year. They looked at the catchment, so all the way up to the sort of hills, and they're investigating the different options that would do surface water separation to stop that excess rainwater getting into the sewage system and all to slow down the flow of the surface water in the sewage system. And there's two main options for this area, for the Falmouth Town Council area. One is building storage tanks, and you build them underground, under a car park, for example. And there's one of the big one underneath the car park, makes the tents cool, near Queen Mary Gardens. And the second, the second main area of solution is, as I say, surface water separation. So what can we do to keep that water out of the sewage system? There's a third which is looking for infiltration, where unexpected water is getting into the system, but that's not one of the two main options here in Falmouth. So the concept and design team that South West Water has have been taking the Stantec reports and looking at those options. Those options are going to an investment panel this week. And once that investment panel is approved through, it's an internal governance process essentially, it's kind of like you improve your budget. Once that's been approved, then that, that will pass to our engineering team and they will start coming to do the surveys that will determine what actually happens. Now, all of those nine CSAs, I've just pulled out three here at the bottom of the screen to give you a sense of what's happening. So the spills at Queen Mary Gardens, those are proposed to be resolved by surface water separation. So you can expect to see infrastructure development or different activities happening to do, to do that surface water separation around that area. Grove Place number one, so that's the bottom of Grove Road, near the car park, where the channel goes through, that's a surface water separation scheme. The complex one, the spills that happen at Prince of Wales Pier, and we've got a number of storm overflows all down Kiligrew, Webber Street, High Street, Market Street, that all feed through into Prince of Wales Pier. And if you look at, according to the team we were speaking to today, if you look at the basic scenario of surface water separation and an enhanced scenario of surface water separation, you still need a storage tank to stop the spills at Prince of Wales Pier. And that building a storage tank is likely to be here on the wall. And that is what we need to come back and talk to you about once the business case is approved, because we want to talk to you about how we do it, when we do it is going to be a critical factor, I think, because of the programme of events that we have here in Falmouth. So that's, that's an overview of the work that we've got underway. The track record, I hope some of you in this room have been around in the 1990s and you'll be aware of the Clean Sweet Campaign and the work that was invested across the South West to radically increase the amount of wastewater that was treated before it was pumped out to sea. So South West Water invested over £2 billion, the investment here in Falmouth was completed in 2000. And it was, you know, we're now at 100% good or excellent bathing waters in the South West compared to 51% before that investment was made. So there is a track record of transformation, where we now are is the next phase of that transformation to reduce reliance on storm overflows. But it's not just about storm overflow, so I need to, I need to make sure that everyone's aware of that. So over the last two years, we've had a period of prolonged dry weather, which has meant the Colford Reservoir, for example, which provides water for 65% of Cornwall, got down to 15% full last year, which is quite worrying. So what we've been doing is we've, we've been safely taking spare water from rivers to backfill Colford Reservoir. And we've been identifying new sources of water, so we bought Hawkes Tor, which you might have heard of past on day 30, from a quarry. Over last winter, we were able to take water from Hawkes Tor and pump it across to Colford and then keep the river topped up when the flow was low. We have been, there's a dog over there, investing to find leaks and to fix those leaks, including using snipper dogs, which can cover a lot more ground than humans can. And then, as you have a Drainage and Wastewater Management Plan, there's a twin or a sister plan, which is the Water Resources Management Plan. And this is where we're looking at the next 25 to 50 years to make sure there's enough supply of water, but also trying to reduce demand of water, because the government have set targets to reduce per capita, so the amount of water that individual chews from something like 110 litres a day to something like 80 litres a day, I may not have those figures exactly correct, so apologise for that. Also, because of the impact of climate change, we're seeing more intense rain and hotter, drier summers. And that's not good, that weather pattern for filling up the reservoirs. So we are currently looking, and are in pre-application stage, looking at a desalination plot, we call it, to try and secure our water supply into the long term. And I think we will be saying more about that publicly over the next six weeks or so. It's not proposed to be here in Falmouth. And then we've been doing this Save Every Rock campaign, which hopefully has, you've seen on the bus stop or heard on Radio Cornwall. And that's just providing tips and tools to help people save water in their house and in their everyday uses. And hope some of you have water but that was provided free to you from South West Water. This is the work of my team, so my team work with organisations like the Wildlife Trust, who I used to work for. And they employ farm advisors to go out and work with landowners and farmers to change the way they farm, to reduce the impact of their farming on drinking water. So Cornwall Wildlife Trust are currently active in land around Stiliens, but also Argo and College. And they're, they're trying to stop pollution from getting into the drinking water supplies in the first place, because obviously it has a cost for South West Water to take that stuff out of the drinking water supply further down the line. And it's better for wildlife along the way as well. So some other examples of my team, we've got Peatland Restoration going on in Dartmoor, Exmoor, Bodmin Moor and Penwith. And we do a lot of work to control invasive non-native species. So these critters really like water infrastructure. And South West Water and other water companies work really hard to stop invasive species becoming, overwhelming our water infrastructures. There's a lot of them in reservoirs and things, so we survey, we monitor and we control invasive non-native species as well. Another part of my role is to promote nature based solutions, so we're trying to identify where we can work with nature and natural processes rather than build storage tanks. Let me just skip through some of these. Right, this is the nuts and bolts, the questions I was asked. So shall I, do you want to ask them? They might, I have them in the same order as you've got them.
Of course. Yeah, if you have one, you can, yeah, then we'll.
I'll check.
Okay, do that, do that. So there were two sets of questions that came in about dry spills. So I've, I've looked at the questions that came in and repackaged them, and they're school questions, if that's okay, you wanted to answer them and not repeat them. So what are dry spills? How many have happened in the last year? How does the public know when spills happen, dry or otherwise? And if more investment is needed, why does South West Water continue to pay dividends to shareholders? Okay, okay, so good to go. So dry spills are when water comes out of a storm overflow, discharged from the network without there having been significant rainfall. So all that diagram I showed you earlier, which shows that with rainfall, the system gets overwhelmed and there's a spill. The dry spill is when there happens excessive rain. Now, that can be particularly damaging to the environment because you haven't got the excess rain to dilute the sewage, if you sort of mean. So when, when it comes out, it's dry, it can be more damaging. What we've got at the moment is a situation where there's no accepted formal definition of what a dry spill actually is. So there's currently work in train with the Environment Agency, a group called Water UK, who work with and represent water companies and water companies to come up with a definition of what is a dry spill. Now, there was press coverage about this two weeks ago, and that was on the back of a BBC investigation. And the BBC investigation defined a dry spill as zero rainfall in four days before a spill. So that was quite a long, long window. The task group that I mentioned earlier is considering what that period should be. But one of the real periods for consideration is whether it should be defined as a 24 hour period, which is a much, much tighter definition of what a dry spill is. You'll look at me like that, does that make sense all night?
Yeah, 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 it does, yeah.
Sorry, you're using my benchmark.
I'm surprised, I always have got a snotty nose and slight headaches, so sorry for looking at you weird.
So how many dry spills have happened over the last year? We do measure obviously when we spill, we know when we spill because we've got monitoring devices at every single of the 1,342 storm overflows. But we're not sharing information about that because we're under criminal investigation at the moment. So South West Water and five other water companies are all under criminal investigation about dry spills. So that means I can't share a summary of how many spills there have been and how many may not have been dry spills at this point. However, the Information Commissioner is looking at that decision not to share information and that position may change.
That's fair enough.
Yeah. How does the public know when spills happen, dry or otherwise? Well, my advice, if you want to know when a spill happens, go onto the Water Fit Live database. This shows you each storm overflow that could impact on the quality of bathing water. Let me give you a whistle stop tour into this system. So what you're looking for, when you click on one of these coloured dots, the blue tells you that there hasn't been a spill in the last 24 hours and that the bathing water is fine. And orange tells you that a monitor has been activated in the last 24 hours, so let me say that in a bit more detail. So this is, this is Falmouth, you've got Gilly, Swanpool, and these are the outlets, this is where the spill would come out, and these are where the monitors are and the storm overflows are. The green tells you that that monitor hasn't been activated in the last 24 hours. Yellow tells you it has activated in the last 24 hours, that's fair enough for those, this was Saturday afternoon at four o'clock when I did this. And then there, I couldn't, I struggled to find red, and that red means there's a live spill happening at the moment. And this was hail, that's quite a long outflow into the bay that hail, and that was, that was spilling, but that's why when I looked into the system. So because I knew I was coming here at six o'clock this evening, I thought I'd just go on and see what's happening today. So this evening, six o'clock, your, your storm overflows are all blue in Falmouth, which means that nothing's been activated in the last 24 hours. Hail has been activated in the last 24 hours, and there were no reds. There was another activation in Foy, but there wasn't any others that I could find at six o'clock. So the final part of the dry spill question was about investment of shareholders and so on. Now, I'm not responsible for privatisation, that decision was taken before, well, before I left school. But just to give you a sense of scale, the annual spend of South West Water is around £900 million. The bulk of that cost goes on investment in our assets, so pipes, sewer street works, drinking water supplies, et cetera. 10% of that cost is on power, which is incredible, and so. And so we're working with Cornwall Council and others on the local area energy plans. But we obviously, when we can work more collaboratively. Eight percent of the cost is on debt. And that's debt, which is the money that we borrowed from investors to pay for all of this. And eight percent is on dividends. So to fund the work of a water company, we have to borrow money from investors. And that money is either from the loan or it's equity from shareholders. And it's the cost of eight percent or the cost of debt and eight percent on dividends. Now, this is going to be challenging if you're at the front of the room or alone at the back. But this is an extract from a briefing note that I had from colleagues about dividends. And essentially, and I'm happy to share this, Richard, back with you so you can share with others. But essentially, what this says is that. Devon's dividend policy, if anyone of you knows our shares, you're probably going to know more than I do on this one. But our dividend policy is CPI H plus two percent. CPI H is the Consumer Price Index and H is an adjustment for household. So I don't really understand, but others of you in the room might do. But that, what, the point I'm trying to make here is that the dividend policy is set as part of the setting up of a business plan. And that's regulated by Ofwat. He won't let you pay more or less than they'll let you pay. You have to propose what you're going to pay in terms of dividend and then they approve it and, you know. And that's how it is. It's, I don't think it's much more, much more complicated than that. But the final point, I guess, is that in relation to dividends to shareholders, Southwest Water is the only water company that, where customers are also shareholders. So you have, every customer of Southwest Water has the opportunity to be a shareholder. And one in fourteen customers are shareholders of Southwest Water as well. So that's just something to bear in mind. Right, so that was the dry spills for all. We then had a bundle of questions, I won't mention names, a bundle of questions around planning. In particular, in relation to some luxury apartments in Middle Point and another, another planning issue around Falmouth View Dock, Constantine. So again, I've tried to still, some of the questions were really statements and some, some were. But the first question related back to some commitments that seemingly were made back in twenty eighteen, where there was reference, apparently a Southwest Water representative came to this forum. We haven't got a clear record of that meeting. So if you have, that would be great, great to see. But it mentioned in, the person who sent the question in, mentioned that some commitments were made to put some additional treatment works in place. Well, I've researched that and we are still looking for where additional storm storage sites can be located. And that's included in the package of works that I mentioned earlier. So that will be tackled. There was then some more specific questions around Falmouth View Dock, Constantine Parish, Boundaries. And the person with development at Eve Park. So the first question was, is there sewage waste directed towards the Falmouth Treatment Works? And the answer is, Constantine now has its own sewage treatment works, but the View Dock side goes into Falmouth Sewage Treatment Works. So that's the answer to that one. And then, is there surface water collected and stored according to Water Harvesting Guidance for new developments? That's, that's more a matter for Cornwall Council than probably yourselves as to whether the rainwater harvesting happens in line with the Climate Change DPD of the Planning and Authority. So I think it would be worth, maybe separately if we come back, having a bit of conversation about rainwater harvesting because there's a lot of surface water separation benefits that we could do on a bigger scale. The next question, there are major concerns with the continued pollution of Swanpool Brackish Lake, which is a triple S I site, I'm sure you all know about Swanpool Lake and its definitions. How do we intend to address this issue? Well, I went and had a look, I know Swanpool very well, and had a look at the local nature reserve information. And there's four sources of pollution listed there. It's having the main impact on the Trenton Sea Man and the Brackish waters. One is nutrients from agricultural runoff from domestic detergents. Second is urban runoff. Third is the deliberate introduction of non-native animal species like terrapins. And the final one is the spread of non-native plant species like tapiries, not weed, like which spreads if you don't have a lot of waste. So of those, the ones that we are helping with are the deliberate introduction of non-native species via through our invasive tomorrow, embracing awareness of that. And we're also then working with the Friends of Trenton Lake Wood and the Falmouth Green Corridor Forum. And we're having, we've got signs printed up that will come be erected over coming weeks. And that's what to do if you're walking around there and you think you can see a pollution. So where to report that pollution. So those signs will start going up in the coming weeks. Another question from the same person from memory. Lurries are transporting solid waste to the St Dennis Incinerator. This is highly efficient and environmentally friendly. This surely contributes our Falmouth Town Council and Cornwall Council's green environmental policy as well. I can confirm, I've checked and double-checked today, Southwest Water isn't transporting any solid waste to the St Dennis Incinerator. That's a council, a council owned facility that's generating energy from domestic waste. However, the answer for what happens to sludge, which is the by-product of wastewater treatment, we have arrangements with contractors and any sludge that's compliant with what's called the farming waste of water at the end of the wastewater treatment process, that is picked up and distributed back out to farmers. If it's not compliant with the sewage treat, with the farming waste of water, then it's taken up to Tiverton, whereas then put under further treatment and then distributed out to farmers in the region to, to help with their soil and fertilising especially. Right, we're on the last page, you'll be pleased to know, sorry, I'm probably running out now. What plans does Southwest Water have to renew the sewer treatment plants and extend the sewage pipes further into Falmouth Bay? Currently, visitors, I'll paraphrase, are confronted with dirty sewage, contaminated, smelly, infested seaweed. Swimmers often bane with apparent contamination on certain ties with more shoreweed. I think I've probably covered it, that the investments that were already planning will help tackle the impact on Gilly Blades Beach and Swanpool Beach. There are currently no plans to extend the sewage pipes further into Falmouth Bay. That's, that's an option that's on the table. Final question then, how often does Southwest Water measure and publish levels of sea contamination for the public to view at beaches? I have to take this question in two parts. So firstly, that Waterbit Live system that I showed you earlier, that operates twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three to sixty-five days a year, constantly. It's constantly being updated because it's really near we all have information from the monitors that are in storm overflows. Signage, the second part of the question, is the responsibility of beach managers, where there is a beach manager or a beach champion in some cases, like the owner of a cafe or friends of the park beach forum or the R M L R. So those people take the decision on the local level as to whether to put a sign up, informed by our data, our information and during bathing water season, informed by the Environment Agency, which risk forecast too. And it's up to the beach manager or the cafe or the coastal champion to decide whether a sign is necessary because they'll take local conditions into account. They'll know how long the spill was activated for and what the tide's doing. And they may choose to put a sign up, they may choose not to put a sign up. It depends on local circumstances. So that's the answer to that question. I think I'm on the end of the questions, unless you've got the other ones to add.
Well, just doesn't check a moment. I think you've covered the board, but anybody that, oh, well, okay. We've got a number of intensive, we've got down hurts and. Okay, so we'll take out somebody first.
Yeah. You went quickly over the split of where all the money goes, the investment, how much you're making dividends and everything. You don't have to take dividends. If Ofwat change you, this is what you have, you don't have to take it. My question is, eighty-eight percent, which is the dividend, if you're fined, does that come out of that dividend money? Or does it come out of the rest of our pockets? Do you pay for the.
It's a good question, I don't know the answer to it. So I can find, go away and take, take that question, I don't really know the answer generally.
You'll, you'll come back and tell me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just, obviously, you have a particular role in Southwest Water. So that, I'm very happy if any of these questions, if Val, you don't mind writing them down and we can give them on to Carolyn, you can get back to us and I can distribute them, talk about them.
Yeah, I do know that some fines go into some courts and other fines go into a national court. And so I can come back and comment, but let me get the details.
Thank you, thanks, Sophie.
Yeah, thank you for that, very good. You mentioned Eve Park earlier, as everybody knows, it's a massive estate. Okay, my question is, the more and more houses that are being built means less of that natural groundwater in the fields. Do you feel Southwest Water have the infrastructure to cope with the extra water drainage and sewage from these developments? Because as you know, Eve Park is on that exit of that.
Yeah.
And I believe everything's coming from there, coming this way.
Yeah.
So do you feel that you have the infrastructure to cope? Because as you know, more and more developments, as you go along, because you have to, you know.
Yeah, it's a really interesting question. And there's a few different aspects to respond to, exactly. So Southwest Water used to have a role in the planning, a formal role in the planning process, where it was a statutory council team. It doesn't now have that formal role. Instead, in twenty-ten, a duty to connect was introduced where water companies are obliged to supply drinking water and is connected to the wastewater treatment work. So because of that duty to connect, we have a developer, we call it Developer Services Team. And they're in touch with developers and global authorities across Devon, Wales and C. And they, alongside colleagues in wastewater services in particular, will look at various formulas to understand whether the system can cope with the additional housing pressures. And in some places, whether the developer contributes towards enhancing the capacity. But it's, it's tricky one with continued government targets for housing in the way that they are. So, yeah, the more, the more that housing developers can demonstrate that they do things like the building nature standard, where the standards for water wellbeing and the wildlife. I mean, that's the kind of quality housing development that I think Cornwall is pushing for. That's something I promoted when I was at Cornwall Council, Cornwall Wildlife Trust. And I know the council have adopted that and they have trained assessors. So I hope to see all of those quality developments coming forward. But I guess it's to market things and.
Thank you. Council Kirk, can I have just a couple of things?
Well, I was going to kind of bring up what you were saying about the planning because we've had a number of blocks of flats built, basically on tarmac and concrete. And they've had water tanks, and they said they were wrong size, and ones connect. And there have been disputes because of who owns the flats and when they were sold on and whether it's Southwest Water's responsibility or their responsibility. And the fact that you've lost that power to be able to veto or do anything about developments now, it feels like something that must be causing Southwest Water issues as well as the people of Falmouth. So maybe that's something to look at in the planning process. And the question I was going to ask was about the desalination class and whether you look to other sources of water. Because we're looking now at things like Gillingback's St Crofty and the World of Lithium. And all of those have water as a by-product. So I wonder if there was any possibility of you working with some of those in new industries.
Yeah, absolutely. So perhaps I've covered the planning point, if that's all right, repeating for everyone else. But absolutely, that's why I was at the same point you were at last week. So identifying new sources of water is a key part of that Water Resources Management Plan. I mentioned Hawkes Tor. There are other quarries in Cornwall in particular that we are working with their owners, put it that way, to bring into supply. There's another one in the St Austell area that we're building quite privately to take its one of our water treatment works. And as you rightly point out, there's a massive network of lines and adits that are under the ground, full of water, some of which is probably heavily polluted because of the industry, the heritage of the industry. But some of it could be suitable to put into supply. So we are looking at that as well. But the desalination is the first on the list, I think.
Thank you, Council Barrow.
Thanks for coming in, I'm reported. If any of the members of the public who fed in the questions feel they haven't been answered, hopefully that would be surprising, as I mentioned. Can we make sure that there's a way to then carry on the conversation with you direct or?
Yeah, I mean, what, I just.
Would it be the best route?
I think initially route them through the secretary at the Falmouth Town Council. You can then channel them to me perhaps in a batch if, if there's anything. But some of the people who ask questions have contacted me direct anyway. So some of them will have my contact. I'm available on a channel, it's not difficult to find them.
Yeah, I really appreciate you taking the time to do that. Are you able to share this conversation with us? Because that makes me have a lot of the details.
Yeah.
Actually, it'd be really useful for people to look at for themselves. I've got one question before, oh, I'll put it to you, Council.
Yeah.
And that was about this speed, I'm really happy to see it. I've learnt loads, I'll be honest, and I thought I knew quite a bit. So I'm really grateful for you coming, actually, so I've learned some new things particularly. So it's great that you've been prioritised and there's some real actionable things going to be happening. I was just wondering about timeframes and specifically about where I was here. Because that's something that happens, it's a big challenge for us, you know, because it's rising within the town.
Yeah, and.
Anybody else?
Yeah, so there's, there's timeframes associated with the Waterbit Investment Programme in twenty-twenty-five for activity to have started by twenty-twenty-five. There's another timeframe associated with accelerated delivery because that's a time limited investment. But I think what's more important, well, not, not more important, as important is that we get it right.
Yeah.
So those potentially arbitrary timelines, once it goes through this governance process that I mentioned this week, they may have to change in order to get the right solution and the right sequencing because it's quite, it's quite a complex thing, particularly down Princeps here. But, but once the governance goes ahead on Thursday, which I assume everyone assumes it will, then the surveys start, then you start to see people in high vis jackets, walking through with cameras underground and doing that stuff.
So you're reassuring us that something definitely is going to happen, but just not exactly sure the specifics of what that is.
Yeah.
Fantastic, that's really great to hear. And a follow-up question, is that Waterbit, is that something you can access as a member of the public? Or is that something you can, I mean, is that, because you use search on the internet?
Yeah.
Yeah, really useful. Right, I've got, Sophie then, Emily then, Alan, so Council Young.
Thank you, I really admire your presentation, really appreciate you coming. Such a shame that Southwest Water hasn't been planning for planning meetings for so long. And I'm wondering if there's any arrangement whereby they will be able to be leading into on their planning decisions. Yes, I might get questions. I've also got a couple of questions from residents, I'm a bit confused by the process. I've got a dog that I didn't.
So I'm just going to stop you a minute because I think we've covered everything. I've got two from residents here that it does look like they, we, just three of us just checked the content about dry days, how many times you can't answer because of the thing, why it's happened. I think you described that, probably considering compensation, that's one part of it. Is that this stuff there?
There seem to be a couple more that have come down these, I'm, it's okay, I'll just ask those.
Okay.
So, yeah, one is, is it true, as we know, for some chances, even when you swim to the sea or dream on dry days, how many times has this happened in the last year? Why has it happened? And shouldn't it probably know each time that it happens so much? Avoid swimming in water. And the suggestion that Southwest Water should consider compensations for residents with any agreed production to make in all of these things.
That's the question I was just reading.
Oh, yeah.
So some of that I've answered.
Yes.
And I can't say how many dry spills there are because of the criminal investigation. The matter of compensation, I don't think that's one question that I've been asked recently. I don't know the answer to compensation. I do know that when Southwest Water. No, I don't know the answer to that, I'll put that one in.
That's not in the, I'll take that one later, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
It's just part of that, I suppose. I'm aware that an app and a website is not somewhere that people are going to look at when they're turning up at the beach where they're playing on the foot. And I'm wondering if there's any support for an initiative locally to have a display board, have the entrances to all of the beaches, which will inform people on the problem to safety. And I know there's a blue flag.
Yeah.
which will inform people on the problem safely. And I know there's a blue flag, but the information going to the local cafe, they have open art, they have the, you know, all those students, and then to get the information out of the light on time. So is there support for that?
Okay, so there, there is a local beach manager, um, or coastal champion in place, like I mentioned, so R and L Live do it here at Gilling. Um, they have full access to the, um, water fit live app. Um, and they also have access in the bathing water season to the environment agencies, bush and the sport class. And it's down to the local beach manager to decide based on environmental conditions if a sign is relevant. Because you appreciate that if you're a beach cafe and you see that there's a spill that's gone for two minutes, you might also put a sign up, just those minutes ago, for two minutes, because you've got the trade off. So, so it's, it's up to the locals, that's me, has the sort of ability of the signage to put a sign up as and when they see fit.
That's, I really appreciate that. I've got, I'm gonna send the other two, because we've, I'm very aware, we've got about eighty agenda items in another presentation. Um, just bear in mind for the time, that's all. Is that because I've got, there's two of the councils waiting? That's okay. Um, I've got Council Seela.
All right. Um, I'm very intrigued. I did actually go on to speak.
Stand up, sorry, Ellen, please.
I did actually go on to the water bit a little bit at the end of the presentation. I'm very intrigued. It's great that we have that live information there. I did notice that, um, two of our managers have become happy and triggered yesterday, but it doesn't say, um, if that had happened. Couldn't see any trend figures. So it would just been one, like, say one spell that happened, I remember it was forty minutes yesterday.
Yeah.
But I can take that information as interesting. As far as I can see, I couldn't see if it also happened the day before or the day before. That would obviously impact my, my assessment of the situation. It showed how many spills, twenty twenty two.
That's specific information.
Yeah, I can see that. But, I mean, last week, I can see that it was yesterday, but I can't see if it was three times last week.
Yeah.
Um, is that information that you're aware is missing that might be coming? Because I think that would be key to my decisions.
Yeah, so this, this is the first couple of information. It's just for the storm overflows that are, that are potentially impacting the bathing waters. The plan is, and this will happen in the next year or eighteen months, for every single storm, every one of those one thousand three hundred and forty two, the same data about this and whether it's spinning or not will go live on the website. So even if you're using a river, there isn't bathing water status, you'll be able to see if it's been activated. I don't know about the trend of the information. I'll have to go back and check.
As far as I can see, you can only see the last time that it was monitored, sorry, the last time, how long it lasted, which is good information. But as I say, if it also happened that morning, then we've actually for the whole day, we've had a few hours of still running that course and this is day five, when you're looking at the map.
I'll find it for West Water in this area. The reason that that, um, danger is on for that time is because of tidal cycles. Because all of these, um, combined flows are in tidal waters, then that information is then kept there for that tidal cycle until the next one happens. So if you don't see, you won't see historic spills because of the tidal activity. And we're going to scroll after that, which will be the last cycle and supply that question together.
Your questions about the trend of weeks, the trends. I've got it in three times last week, because accumulatively, I'd, I'd consider that to be, oh, like more pollution.
I, I, I appreciate that, but the reason it's done that way is because of the tidal cycle, um, so the tide will take away pollution from the bathing. And they won't go to again until that's next spill. That's why it's not cast, because it's sorry, the data, because the pollution stays around in the areas dependent on the tidal frequency.
Well, I'd like to mention that. I think the frequency and trend data would be something that as a swimmer, you'd see. I'd like to see.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's right.
Thank you. Uh, Council Abbot, John.
Very good presentation. The one question you haven't asked is how much is it gonna cost everyone with the ongoing cost of the crisis and inflation? Have you got any idea what this is gonna put on an average bill in the future or is it, are you just gonna vulnerable? And then, and take the, the price off the dividend, shareholders not put on the.
Um, so at the moment in Exeter and the headquarters, there are lots of people, um, preparing what's called PR twenty four, price review twenty four, um, which is the business plan for twenty twenty five to twenty thirty. It has to be submitted to Ofwat on the second of October, i.e. two weeks and two weekends away, as we have, as we've told today. Um, that document will contain, and it will be published on the second of October. That will contain the, um, cost of all this activity, um, and it will contain the impacts of that on, um, customers' bills as well. So I'm not, I'm, I don't wanna dis, I'm just standing away from that issue, but it's, it's, it, there's, I know that there's people working on it probably now in terms of hunching the numbers. So let's, let's if we can wait till the second of October when that information is published, and then we can have another conversation about that.
Fantastic. Well, we're gonna draw that to a close there, because we allowed twenty minutes and we've gone about three fifty. So thank, no, no, don't apologize. I really appreciate you being so thorough and giving everybody the opportunity to ask questions. Uh, but we'll send you a follow up list if that's the case. If anybody in the room fills out their question and wasn't answered, they can come and see me. I'll put my email address and you can compile it, and then we can send those off. Just bear in mind, we've got three other presentations and everyone probably wants to have dinner at some point today. So thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate your time, um, Carolyn. Thank you, councillors, um, for the way you have helped yourselves. Very appreciate that. Um, so you're happy to go, you're happy to stay. Thank you ever so much for your time. We'll be in touch. And of course, if we can ever help you or you want to simulate information, you, you know where we are. Thanks very much. And, so we've now got, oh, obviously the residents, you're all safe. You can say if you'd like to leave, you're all safe. Welcome to leave at any point. There's no obligation, um, either way. And please do get in touch with us via the internet. If you want to email, but everything in the field, we do get time to cover. Thank you. And you can just try and be quiet as you're leaving the room. Councillors, just so we can particularly be sure you're looking towards your passing, Council Bear Leg, listening to. Council Bear Leg. Thank you. We all have our passes at some point. Uh, so, Cora's for Cornwall, I believe you've got Alex Forrest. Thank you so much for your patience and seeing through, um, that. Very much appreciate you coming to speak to us today. Do you have a presentation? Are you just gonna talk?
I'm just gonna talk a bit.
Fantastic. Wonderful. Thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, good evening and thank you, Val MacLeish, uh, first of all. My name's Alex Forrester from Forest of Cornwall. So, um, I'd be interested if you could like, uh, this is a nominee to determinism, now driven outcome, so here I am. Uh, forest by name, forest by nature. Um, I'm just giving a bit of an update really on the current projects. Uh, within Falmouth and people more in generally. So Forest of Cornwall, for those that might not have realised fully, um, was born out of the, uh, council's climate emergency announcement back in twenty nineteen as a flagship programme. And then since then, uh, we've been working, I work on the urban and community side of the team, and then to plant it at scale, that way we're farmers and landowners. Uh, since the, the creation of the project, we actually reached milestone in the last few months. Six hundred thousand trees planted across the county, so that's one per resident essentially. Um, but the project is ongoing until twenty twenty five, uh, at the minimum, and then hopefully beyond that as well. Part of what we're doing here in Falmouth this current planting season is in Prisloe Fields. So near Swanpool, actually, in the green corridor that we're here in the park. Um, we'll be planting a bit of an extension of the woodland there, uh, in a, it's called Mayo Waddell branch, which is mini, mini forest. So you densely plant one area, uh, and the trees between them will then survive and some wealth, which is the, the nature of it. Uh, but the idea is that we will invert ground, add some additions, um, to hopefully get that kind of, uh, best chance of this, that mini forest will have. In addition to that, in Prisloe Fields, we're also planting some fruit trees. So again, the message is behind that is that it's there for people to come in and access, uh, whether it's picking the fruit, you know, in three or four years' time. Or speak with Forest of Cornwall about how they can get involved. First of all, in the planting, we'd like to empower people and get people involved. Um, but also in the ongoing maintenance. And part of that package around the ongoing maintenance, um, a bit of a handless task for people that might be watering, for example. Uh, but we are working with Southwest Water to provide water books. Uh, and we've also got a scheme called Tree Guardians, where people can, uh, volunteer their time, water a tree, for example, and claim time credits. So for every hour that you might water a tree over a week, you get one time credit. And if you get two time credits, for example, you can go and see the show at the Meack or go to the Seal Sanctuary, anywhere, retire and such like that. In addition to, well, first of all, in Prisloe Fields, so we will be planting on the weekend, just gone, we were, uh, in the park, just trying to know the residents and finding out if they support it or whether they'd like to get involved. We're also actually having another engagement event here at the Park Gallery on the twenty third of October. So give them a good chat to us, find out more about trees in your local area, whether it's Prisloe Fields or not, um, get advice around whatever it might be. And then we'll be planting in National Tree, which will from the twenty fifth of November for a week, so into the second of December, I think it is. Uh, and we'll be doing two planting days. Um, ideally, we'd like to get residents to come and help us plant and get involved and just find out more really. Don't have to stay there all day. It's just an opportunity for people to put a tree in their ground, um, and leave a bit of their place here to know that they've been involved as well. Um, outside of Prisloe Fields, we're also working with Cornwall Housing Limited here in Falmouth. And across a number of their estates, we'll be planting, uh, standard trees. And again, working with their residents and local people that might like to get involved, helping us to plant, uh, to plant at those sites. Um, we're also working with a local business near Prisloe called Watson Marla. And they are creating, uh, an orchard within their grounds, and that will be publicly accessible as well for people to, you know, go and learn more about them, do workshops there, or go and get the fruit and stuff like that. So essentially, it's just raising awareness of tree planting across the county, here in Falmouth, uh, providing opportunities for people that might not to get involved, whether it's in the planting or the ongoing maintenance as well. Um, and that's probably me in a nutshell. So I don't know if there's any question just in general, or I can.
That's been helpful. Thank you. Um, Patsy, I've got a question. We've been talking about planting trees on Cornwall Housing, um, for a long time, and it was always very complicated and I wasn't able to do it. So it's brilliant that they're doing it. I just wondered where.
It is, uh, I can't remember the names, Godolphin Crescent, uh, Godolphin Road. And there's.
I don't know where it is. I'm just trying to think.
Grenville Crescent, Grenville Road, Godolphin is the area that we're concentrating on for this time around. Um, that, the, the funding for the tree planting on Cornwall Housing Limited is part of the Urban Tree Challenge Fund, which Forest of Cornwall put in. We're expecting to hear a successful outcome, uh, at the end of October. So we're in particular focused for Falmouth, those who are all concentrating on the CHL here. However, we're working across a number of their estates, um, this year and also next planting season as well. So I'm in the process.
Uh, yeah, Council, just a quick follow up.
Quick follow up, yeah. Just to say, um, I'm not sure that that's too regularly planned, but maybe when we did the Making Space for Nature on the weekend, it helped when, um, they just completely dropped the terms of people moving around, because people then need quite more to get involved, so it's possible, but.
We have, so I'm working very closely with CHL in terms of engaging their residents.
Oh, good.
Um, they had, not the residents, CHL, uh, don't work with, had a kind of engagement consultation letter about why we're planting outside properties, what the trees might look like, how they might grow, how we can get involved. There's an opportunity to feedback to people who have got concerns, actually, um.
I'm on the Residents Association forum. It colours those robes, so anything they want to say to me, I can just.
Perfect, that would be super.
Fantastic. Um, Council Ross, then, yeah.
With your water tree planting within the town and reservoir fields and such, I hope we're looking to plant some specimen trees as well, not necessarily natives.
Um, within Prisloe, it will be natives predominantly. Um, but on the kind of more urban areas, actually, so talking about CHL, for example, those will be, uh, some specimen trees as well in standards. So not all natives, uh, don't have all of those species with me right now, but we've got, we've got a great plant offering feedback in terms of what they might be.
Thank you very much. Uh, Council Young.
Thank you very much. Uh, great that you're doing this work. Um, two questions. Uh, one is, um, in light of, uh, sort of ever speeding climate change, what diversity of species are you using? If you're focusing on natives, is there not a risk that they may become overwhelmed by the droughts affecting some of your common trees out already?
Yes. Uh, you're absolutely right, and it's a very good question, and it's a conversation that we have, uh, perpetually within the team in terms of what we're planting now to meet, uh, what the climate might look like in ten, twenty years' time. And actually how we're gonna mitigate, get the climate change and the change in temperatures. Drought, for example, we already know in the forthcoming summer next year, it's gonna be drought conditions. Um, so what can we be planting now that are gonna be, uh, essentially that follows our motto, we do Forest of Cornwall, which is the right tree in the right place. Um, so we will be diversifying the types of trees we do plant. Um, there is a balance there in terms of, uh, ecology, biodiversity, as it is now, uh, and the trees, the native trees that we are planting now. And a trade off in terms of what might be non-natives that we're planting, um, and how they might impact the local area, you know, the, 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 the general tree population. So we are looking at it in terms of what species we, we do plant across the whole of the areas that we, that we work now. But trees are specifically for having the right purpose for the right places as well.
Thanks. So just another sub- question. So, um, in light of the fact that, uh, trees only start to saturate hard when they're about thirty years of age, and also mature trees are so much more beneficial for wildlife, for walking around together in situations of flood, et cetera. Uh, what work you're doing is to protect existing trees from being cut down. Because when, uh, some local trees are on the threat, maybe we try to get onto Cornwall House, and we've got absolutely nowhere. Um, and we've got nowhere to go, we've got the police involved at that time to do that. Maybe I'm a bit of a politician. And I can, I can get anybody from, but she's got, she's like, keep going, you're gonna be caught, and then she's gonna, I'm gonna call her, she's, she's.
The issue, so in terms of trees being felled or, or downed, that's actually separate from Forest of Cornwall. So I can't give you a direct answer, because that's within the core of our team at the Cornwall Council. Um, we do try to advise people in the best way possible, uh, when we're looking at projects within Forest of Cornwall, whether it's on, uh, farmlands or life landowners, indoor environment as well, uh, how we can avoid, uh, essentially felling trees. And we, we, we don't, within Forest of Cornwall, we are planting, uh, new trees. And the trees that we plant within Forest of Cornwall are replacements of old trees. They're all new canopy. So in terms of how long we would go down, I think it would just be to keep on the, the pressure within the core portion of the council. If you've got specific concerns about, you know, trees that might be felt, um, would be my advice to you.
Fantastic. Um, is that the end of anything else? Got any questions?
No, thank you so much for coming to speak to us. It'd be really great if you could, um, send any information to us through our social media about your event here.
Yeah.
At Library and your eventual tree time credits that might be situated, that people will be interested in, get involved in.
I can also send you the question by email.
Anything like that that we can publicise for you. It'd be really great to help you. Thank you so much for giving your time to speak to us about the work you're doing in Falmouth. Really appreciate it.
Thank you as well.
Thank you so much. Uh, thank you, councillors. Um, so moving on to a general item number seven, public questions. I've put it on the seat, but obviously we have a number of that from Southwest Water. Um, but you've taken those apart of that agenda items. We've got none. So moving on, you'd be very pleased to know to the please report, you guys, indeed, your bit. Thank you so much for coming.
Public front report. Um, I'm just gonna tell you some of the events we've been busy at since our last meeting. Probably gonna miss a couple because it was June, July, the last.
June, yeah.
June. So we've been involved with, have been involved with our services, Falmouth Week, toolships. Had a few more visits, one very recent the last few days. Um, we've been dealing with our population growth that we have in the summer, which, uh, places huge demand on our resource, which is already working very hard. I'm not gonna use the word stretch. We are working very hard with, with what we've got. Um, and in particular at the moment, uh, because we're here representing the place, but obviously specifically Falmouth Neighbourhood team. Uh, we're currently working on the effect retail. We're trying to tackle a couple of prolific shoplifters, uh, which sounds quite minor. But, um, when you look at the level of impact they're having on the retail, uh, operation in the town centre, uh, it's quite shocking. Um, so we're working on some civil orders, namely criminal behaviour, which most people recognise as the old fashioned ASBO. And we're working very hard, uh, taking community impact statements and business statements from people in, in order to try and tackle this pair, or in particular, which I'm sure which has been inundated with emails about. Um, so that's what we're working on currently. Um, our summer season is getting longer and longer when it comes to demand. So although the summer season is finished, um, the population level still is incredibly high with people holidaying still. So our busy season, it's always busy, but our incredibly busy season is, is getting longer and longer. Getting towards October, really, before we grind down. Um, and obviously since the schools have come back, we've been working hard with the schools. Um, have a couple of projects, but Paul has been working on those, so, um, I may be able to get a report from him for next meeting about some of the things he's, uh, trying to set up with him. Um...
You said, I was saying you said on the safety Falmouth and we could do some bits together as well with the new head.
Yeah, I think there's, I, he, he, he's working on the rollout for some literature and some inputs, more than just literature. Um, in relation to our annual problem of the beaches, large number of units. Uh, been quite apparent this year, it's quietened towards the end of the summer, we've had a huge amount of input down there. We've had extra resource provided, double crew unit each weekend that they need, um, being paid for us overtime and effort to combat the antisocial behaviour down there. We've seen some of it firsthand. Um, so we're working on some literature and a project and getting into the schools to try and combat that repetitive cycle of every year. See if we can educate as well as enforce, um, we'll see how that works next year. Uh, I haven't, sorry, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to remember everything.
Yeah, that's all right.
Um, and obviously if anyone has any questions, yeah.
Yeah, please, thank you. Um, I, I'm going to go to Councilor Fargo first.
Yeah, thanks. That's good to hear about the focus on shoplifting. I've had an incident myself in last April. Um, my main reason for saying that is that in the last month, I had a conversation with a local resident who was reasonably disturbed about what had happened to him. He was arrested, um, I think the arrest involved three police cars and several police officers, including armed ones. Um, he was taken to, I'm not sure if it was Campbell or Red Roof. And after six hours, he was released. Uh, the, the reason he'd been arrested was that the police had supposedly had a phone call from him saying that he was going to go and get a gun and start shooting people. So quite an alarming thing, so I can understand the reaction. What I am concerned about is that when he was released, it was clear to the police that there was no, uh, nothing to do with him. They'd searched his house, didn't find anything incriminating. He asked the question, uh, this is the question I'd like to ask. What are you going to do about finding the person that made the phone call? Do you know about this?
I don't, yeah, I certainly, something with the phone.
I can give you more information, but I don't want, I, I, I've got a load of more information, but it's, it's maybe too much for me to...
Yeah, I think what would probably help us would be to go and work, give some research, find the incident number, while finding out the...
It is disturbing though, because it's someone making malicious calls. It's not the only incident that happens to that person, I think. Um, but this one is obviously definitely malicious.
Yeah, uh, for confidentiality reasons, we should probably discuss that privately, if you all have people to talk to.
Yeah, absolutely. I forget to ask questions, I'm just, I don't know any of the technical things.
Yeah, yeah, if that's, if that's okay. Thank, thank you for... Um, any further questions about Jolly? Councilor?
Uh, thank you very much, yeah. Um, just, um, wondering about, uh, your involvement in planning for, uh, events like the Chorships. I think you may be aware, on the first day, there was a bit of an issue with, um, queuing, hadn't been quite set up right. And it became quite difficult on the streets and, um, you know, kudos to everyone for holding it together. But, um, yeah, with potentially, yeah, because you're quite the person, just wondering what involvement you can have in advance with planning for events like that to ensure that there isn't any risk of, um, alright, so people pushing around in a big way in the streets. And also just about following up about, uh, antisocial behaviour, from the negative views and, um, ideas about whether you have any engagement with, for example, local businesses, community interest companies, et cetera, about creating spaces that are a bit more monitored and where young people can be a bit free, play their own music, do the sort of things that they like to do without being in a box with young people, but also without causing them antisocial behaviour that they like to be doing.
Okay, so the first question I've had, um, we, we meet at a local level on occasion with Richard and we'll get into it. But to be honest, it's, I think it would be, we have a planning events team within the local, local, the Stambury base, the normal exiled Indians, um, who are experienced in planning and they would certainly have their partner. I did hear about the, I came off my bike the week before and smashed my shoulder, I was off for a week. But Johnny was firsthand trying to help out with that situation in particular. I just, for such a huge event, every now and then some small, minor details are going to be missed. All in all, it was, when I was swimming, I, I believed, I was, oh, rest of your, I smashed my shoulder off. Uh, but we do have, uh, an events team that's involved in planning, including road policing, as well as safety, as well as terrorist considerations as well. But that wouldn't be us, it would be very different for me to give you an in-depth answer because it's, yes, the, the answer is yes, we have teams that work with that. But, um, it wouldn't be me personally, um, doing some more events.
Is there, which just comes along that...
Please do.
Yeah, just, just to add to that, sorry, so the, all the emergency services, not just the police, are absolutely integral. So an event of this, of that size, so everyone is involved. Yes, there were challenges, as you said, uh, so on, on the Tuesday. And actually, everyone collectively worked together to make sure it was much, much better for the Wednesday and Thursday. But it isn't just the police, it would be fire, it would be, um, the S- S WAST, the South West Ambulance Service, it would be our medical teams. Everyone collectively comes into that, Cornwall Council, Town Council, and many other organisations, such as volunteers and it's a collective approach. So it's taken to that as well as the safety managers and all the people that are involved.
Thank you. A part two of the question?
So that was antisocial behaviour and groups of youths.
Um, I, I know some of that, it's called being working with the senior centre exactly, that was another piece of...
Yeah, so, so it was another part of Falmouth Police Team, neighbourhood team. And I know that he's been working with Kate Springfield and others at the senior centre in trying to unpick the issues of antisocial behaviour. So for example, we can begin a base, we've had up to a hundred and fifty to two hundred children. Uh, and about a hundred littering, just checking out and doing absolutely nothing wrong. You'll have about thirty who are in the wings watching the influencers. And then you'll have ten to twenty who are problematic, is probably the brightest word I could use within this arena. We've been targeting them pretty hard, we've had some arrests. We do our utmost as police officers not to criminalise children, but unfortunately it's inevitable on occasion with, with a few of our re-leaders, uh, they leave us absolutely no choice. Um, but when we're talking about prevention and providing safe spaces, we're working with the senior centre, obviously, um, we give provision. We try to provide a level of safety for the children who are there who don't want to be involved when they're down in Kinlevies Beach. There's loads of natural resources here. Um, we don't really work, I'm just trying to think of, of what else there is out there to provide safe spaces for children. There, there's lots of things going on, but we're not directly involved with that. We're looking at education and working with children prior to next year, where we haven't done before. Um, we're heavily involved with the school, we're actually specifically looking at the issue of targeting some of the problems down on the beach. Um, so, yeah, watch the space on that. We are trying to work on that problem. I've seen, we can go for weeks and nothing happens down there. But then I see the work of the people who look after the garden, I see the beds that are provided for primary school children trampled. Um, alarming again, I see is, it sounds really minor, but I, excuse me, for a little more. My, my daughter's known to pick up litter from about three to four years old. I don't understand why we're down there picking up alcohol bottles, all sorts of things. Um, there's some fundamental things that need to be looked into and I wonder if they even realise. I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know. So we're working on a complete package to try and talk about antisocial behaviour, littering, criminal damage, sexual offences that could occur whilst under the influence of certain substances in large groups of people like that. We're working on all sorts of things and we're trying to bring our partners with us on that, on that journey. Because we can't, we can't place all of society, we need education, we need members of public reports to us. It needs to be a whole raft of, of answers to that so- social problem.
And to add to that, so as part of safety Falmouth, we've started just about having an inaugural meeting, which we're called becoming to, of like a youth targeted safer Falmouth, which again will have police, fire, youth workers to actually address exactly that.
Some of that, yeah.
Because we can't do it alone, we have to do it collectively, ensure the support, vision, and anything else that goes with that. So that's really helpful, thank you. Um, Councilor Eva was next on my list, then you and Councillor Joel.
I just want to say, we've had exceptionally busy, um, it has put, con resources of the police. But I think sometimes the police are the easy target. Why aren't they doing this, why aren't they doing that? You and I know what they do, we speak room behind you, saying we're not here now, but when I was in the organization. It's, it's dead, I wonder where the parents are sometimes, who will sit down and instead of saying to the police, why are you picking on my kid? Why aren't they doing, banging our heads together and saying, we'll come down and give you a hand? So I just want to say, I think we're very lucky to live in the town we live in. We don't get people shot and stabbed and everything. It does happen, but not a lot. Uh, but as a town, we are victims of our own success, uh, Richard, it's been an exceptionally busy year. And those resources has taken away from what we're asking the police to do sometimes. So that's sort of the positives, right, and work with Matt, Johnny and everything. Uh, we, we can't bend, it, it's, it's something which is broken in society. Um, and, um, but if we work together, we got more of a chance of doing something than picking up on little things which, you know, the police can't do anything about, so...
Appreciate that, Councilor Eva. We, we do appreciate all you do, and you, I, I think obviously first round, like, how, just how much work you, you guys have to do. So appreciate that, but, uh, Councilor Joel?
Yeah, in terms of the antisocial era at Kinlevies, would you agree that the licence granted to this shoplifters may be worse or not? Because I'm on the licensing for Cornwall Council, having it granted, it hasn't got worse since that licence was granted, that shop across the...
It's certainly both very close proximity to the beach. I suspect that if you are of a mind to get alcohol under, alcohol underage, you're going to get it from the Tesco's in town, Sainsbury's at Poncharlton, some of the small shops in town. Sorry, I'm trying to draw it. How it's happening, um, I don't, I don't think, I don't think that, that they're responsible for the issues that, that are there. Um, I think they, along with every other retail outlet, has a responsibility to provide enough staff to keep their staff, their staff safe. And if they grant a licence to sell alcohol, I think we forget this modern age. There are, uh, how can I put, there are certain caveats to holding a licence. Being able to make sure that children don't have alcohol, this is going to be one of them underage sales, whether that's them coming in, taking it, whether it's the sales on. So I think everybody has responsibility, and I have to say publicly, in this meeting with the press, I don't think they can be responsible. They're very close by, they have a shop there. If you want to get alcohol, you can, you can get anywhere. And I think, actually, that some of them get sent down with alcohol, probably, from their parents, from what I've seen. So, um, I think, I think they're a bit of, I've heard this, this thing with alcohol, and I think they're, they made a big escape of, to be honest, i- in, in that respect. If you want to get alcohol underage, well, they seem to, so, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions? Uh, thank you so much for that, Chris. And more, as always, obviously feel free to leave if you'd like to.
We will, that's okay.
Yes, of course, of course. That's all right. Thank you so much for coming and giving your time, I really appreciate that. Um, we've received a Community Safety Report, uh, it came out this morning, it'll be coming to be led Friday. Have you had a chance to read it? Ever put any questions to them, like, please follow up and ask of Martin? It was, it was very, very comprehensive, so no questions, uh, so we'll just make that thinking. Um, Community Network Manager Report, I think we've got one. Uh, there is a new cap which I'll note in tomorrow, so we'll, I might be able to put back on that next time. Uh, Cornwall Council Reports, uh, Phil Stakes will be on, because they're to be, sure.
Thank you, first on. Um, yeah, I've got a few, few little things here. Um, happy to report that a bus shelter is now being constructed at Guelph Bank on the Boudox side of the road. So there, there's works going on there on the stand. Um, things are moving forward regarding the walking cycleway along Bitford Water Road. We had a meeting earlier, uh, earlier this week, or sorry, last week, and it, and it would include any pedestrian crossing. Um, uh, what have I got here? This one is, says, let's test it, they, the narrowing of the road by about one metre. And hopefully reduce the, I'm hoping it'll reduce the speed of it on that road from, um, forty miles an hour to thirty miles an hour, which will be support on that one. So I think that, that, that's good, it's going to move on, I think Dean, Dean Evans will be happy, being a cyclist.
Yeah.
Um, in two weeks' time, I'll be attending the Pusillim appeal. That is the one that, that, uh, they want to put, uh, forty extra houses in the two fields that separate, um, Boudox from Falmouth. Uh, this, this boundary between, uh, Falmouth and Boudox has existed for three hundred and sixty-two years. Since, uh, Falmouth was founded in nineteen, uh, eight, uh, nineteen sixty-one, sorry, eight, sixteen sixty-one, just give me that. Sixteen sixty-one, there it is. So, um, you know, it'll be a shame if we, if we, if we lose that buffer. Because Boudox do want to be joined to Falmouth, I'm sure Falmouth doesn't want to be joined to Boudox. So we'll be going to, uh, the fans going to, uh, to, uh, fight, uh, fight, fight the appeal. And, uh, hopefully some maybe Falmouth Town councillors may, may be able to go along. And also I'd be, Boudox are coming as well. So I think it's very important we, we do that. And also, um, have I got it here? Yes, I'm very happy to, I've been working on a local resident in Falmouth. Uh, sadly, it is Mum died, he's living in a council house in, uh, Oakfield Grove. And they're going to convict him because he wasn't on the, um, he wasn't a tenant, he wasn't on the, on the register. And so, um, so because he'd been living in that house for, I've got fifty odd years, uh, so we managed now that he could stay there until they find another home, he's going to move into a bad burning, Tuscavay Road.
Well, that's great, well done.
Uh, sorry, Chivide Road, opposite me, so I told him if he moves opposite me, he'll be able to... And so, yeah, so that's my report, I can go now. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, David. That's really, appreciate that, thank you. Uh, we'll go down to Councilor Joel?
We're paying to stop on some of my thunder, so the, the, the bus stop on this side of the road is going to be one on my side. Uh, I think three quarters of the highways you're on will, will go to consultation.
Yes.
So the discussion about dropping speed before the three hours goes out and narrowing the road. But I think it's the cheap option, usually we're going to plan to a, a whole new path in the fields, obviously they can't afford that.